I will call our school committee meeting for September 14th to order. If we could stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Introduction to members.
Ted Nobile-Milville.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Matt Catalano-Milville.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin-Milville.
Erin Binaco-Milville.
Lisa Carey, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Perle-Gallinari, Assistant Superintendent Director of Student Services.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
And we have our student reps here for the first time this school year. So I'll have you start with your introductions and then you're actually next on my agenda. So I know you're a veteran, so we'll let you go first.
Yes, Ashley Johnson, Blackstone, Stucco President.
Thank you. What grade are you in?
Um, 11th.
11th, okay. And you're a senior.
Yes, I am.
You made it to the top.
I know, crazy, right?
All right, so who wants to start tonight?
I can start, yeah. So as we begin our school year, a lot of things have been starting up lately. Varsity soccer is currently 1-1 and the girls varsity talker tied their game on Tuesday 4-4. Field hockey has also started up with practices and games, I believe, starting soon. Cross country starts up there, practices next week. This past Saturday, the BMR football team beat Bellingham 16-14. So that was a great victory for them, first one of the year. The cheer team and the band performed at the halftime show. And the first band show is Saturday, the 16th. So I believe it's next Saturday, oh wait, this Saturday, oh my. That's crazy. Yes, and the home show for the band is the 23rd at Bellingham.
BMR had a guest speaker yesterday for some side awareness. Student council has their first full council meeting tomorrow morning. National Honor Society has their first meeting next week. And on September 11th, students visited the 9/11 memorial. And the homecoming dance is Thursday, October 5th, and it is under the stars.
Any questions for our student reps? Thank you so much for coming. We won't put too much pressure on you and your first.
Is it too early to say how many days? For the seniors.
Start that senior countdown.
She's trying to figure it out.
Next time.
You're doing the math.
But do you know when your last day is?
I think Ms. Brinsy said it's the week of like the 22nd and the 24th because one of the last days we're in school, then we have the thing at the Boys and Girls Club, the cleanup, and then just fun days, and then our real last day, and then graduation is May 31st, which is insane.
Exciting because it's in May.
I know.
Yeah. All right, thank you so much. And we'll see you at our next meeting, October 12th.
All right, sounds good, we'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
And moving on, we have consent to Agenda A warrants and minutes of the meeting for August 31st. Just looking for a motion for consent to Agenda A.
So moved.
Motion made by Ted, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any questions, comments, or corrections for the minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. And next up, we have public forum. We go from whole house to. But that's okay, I guess. They need us, they know where to find us. Moving on to school committee, we have our MSBA update from the school building committee. And we're, but I'll let you.
So we're moving along. I know the Dr. DeFalco and leadership have gotten lots of information together that keeping us on the schedule for the MSBA project. And we have the language for the warrants to submit to the towns that we need to vote on. Legal council has already reviewed it and approved it, as well as MSBA, correct? So if everyone here is in favor, we can make a motion to get this voted on because it does need to be submitted. Milville, what, the 21st, I believe, is there?
And there's a process for that, right? Ted has to deliver it to them as the secretary? Do you remember that from being the secretary?
I do fail, fail to remember this.
I think it has to be delivered to the, to Milville, like to the town clerk stamped in dated receipt before September 21st.
It's not the plan.
And I don't know what time they close that day, but. So with that being said, we have a motion in front of us that. So we have two motions for, for the school committee. And then following on here are the, the motions that will appear on the warrants for each town separately. Would anyone like to read the first motion, just so we clearly state it publicly? Thank you.
Voted that the Blackstone-Milville Regional School District hereby appropriates the amount of $500,000 to pay costs of a feasibility study to consider options for developing a new Blackstone-Milville Regional High School located at 175 Lincoln Street, Blackstone, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. The study, said amount to be expended under the direction of the school building committee. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL Chapter 71, Section 16D, and the regional agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The district acknowledges that the Massachusetts School Building Authorities, MSBAs, grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district, provided further that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Okay, so motion made by Carrie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara S. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. And then our second motion, would anyone like to move?
I move that within seven days from the date on which this vote is adopted, the Secretary be and hereby is instructed to notify the Board of Selectment of each of the member towns of this district as to the amount and general purposes of the debt herein authorized as required by the regional agreement and by Chapter 71, Section 16D of the general laws.
Okay, so motion made by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So just to go a little further into this, I'm actually just going to read the explanation that we placed on here on this thing. So we're, we're asking Blackstone for $373,050, $373,050 that will contribute towards the cost of $1 million for the expense of the feasibility study. The $1 million cost is being offset by $500,000 that the school committee had put aside in a capital stabilization fund just this past spring after approved by town meetings. And respectively, we will be asking Milville for $126,950, which again goes towards, and, and that cost is split by their percentages as each budget year. We don't have Blackstone's town meeting date yet. We're anticipating it to be Monday, November 6th, but we will definitely get that date out once it is set on their schedule. Any other?
I just thought Milville's is set for November 1st.
Milville's is November 1st, where they will vote on this warrant article that we're sending them. All right. Any other updates for school building? And moving on, we have recertification of our FY24 state revenues and charges, which we do have a breakdown here. And we need to approve the recertified revenues coming in and the charges going out. So I'm looking for, does any, well, I'll, I'll get the motion out and then we can ask questions if needed. But basically, the governor finished their budget after we had already, and came in a little different. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the certified state budget, which will read as Chapter 70, Charter of School Reimbursements, Regional School Transportation, School Choice Receiving Tuition, brings the total increase to $310,154. Then our outgoing charges, which we pay to school choice sending tuition and charter schools sending tuition, it's an increase of $217,253, which brings a small increase to our overall operating budget of $92,901. Sorry, the revenue, not our operating budget. This is why we should write out our motions ahead of time. Would anyone like to make that motion? And then we can, it can be further explained.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Tara L., is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. Now I will open that for questions because I did not explain it well, or it meant. Did you want to explain that a little more?
Actually, I think it was great. So we, we have a change in the FY24 final state budget as reflected underneath Chapter 70, Charter of School Reimbursements, Regional Transportation, and School Choice Receiving Tuition. And so you can see where the FY24 certified budget, that's our budget, landed versus where the state budget finally landed. And for any friends or family who are listening at home that are wondering why would there be a difference, as Erin explained, our budget process ends months before, in this case, it was literally months before the actual state budget was finalized, which wasn't done until, I believe, the middle of August. So that changed the revenues, but it also changed the charges in terms of the outgoing tuition dollars that we have to spend for school choice and charter school with an overall change in revenues of $92,901.
Which I will point out painfully will cover some of our moving costs. So after all, we may not have to dip into E and D for that because that would have also been painful, but, and I'm saying moving both ways. So this, what could have been a surplus, we will probably spend in the cost of moving back and forth out of MES. Any questions about the revenue adjustment? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. And next up, we have our Spanish teacher here, who is going to introduce a study abroad option for 2025 for the high school students. So if you'd like to join us at the table. If you could speak in English, we'd really appreciate it. I know that's not how your classes are conducted.
And we're nervous in English than Spanish, so I'll do my best.
But if you could just introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry. Jean Riedel, high school, Spanish teacher, I guess, content lead for the department.
Thank you for coming.
And I know a lot of you, I had a lot of your kids over the years.
Some are up and coming, so if you don't know them.
So, so we used to take school trips abroad years and years and years ago, and then things happened, whatever, COVID, of course, happened, and then no one was taking trips. So now I'd like to, well, Dr. DeFalco and I were talking last year or something like that, a year and a half ago, about why don't we take another trip? So I did investigations and I talked to a couple of different companies and I, my principal has been on a school trip in two of them in the past. And so I thought, well, now it's time to present it and see if you would approve, if we could present it to our community, if they would be interested. So I have sent you, I did some research on two, three companies, four companies that I called and talked to, and I settled on the one that I gave you information on, the ACIS, for a couple of different reasons. I checked into EF, I checked into passports, educational travel, connecting classrooms, and I settled on this company because of recommendations from other professionals, other teachers that have gone with that particular company, and also their, the proximity of where they would put students in hotels according to what they'd be doing. They wouldn't be in a hotel and then taking a bus 45 minutes to get to the museum or the aqueduct or wherever it would be. So that's another reason why. And the number of students that they require for a private tour was less than some of the other companies. They would require 20, if we would have 20 of our own students, then we would have just a private tour ourselves versus some of the others were like 30, where then you'd go with another school. And this company also guarantees that our students only get, if we would go with another school, that our students would only room with our students and would not be with other students in hotels or whatever abroad. So I kind of thought that was important as a parent, I would think that would be important. I am a parent, so for me, I would want my kids staying with kids that they know versus kids from other schools. So why take it? I think, you know, it exposes students to cultures and experiences that they may or may not have before, opening their minds to different cultures. They get a wider understanding of the world, they become better global citizens, for sure. They get to see what they learn about in class on not just the videos and the books and me telling them about them, but actually experience it for real life, the historical landmarks and key locations and things like that. In addition, I think, to the cultural and language benefits, it builds personal responsibility, builds relationships with other kids, build confidence, they create lifelong memories and lifelong friendships. I know when I was in high school, I traveled abroad and it was one of the best experiences I ever had. So for all those reasons, I would like to do it. What else, what else? Oh, the timing, is that what, so the timing would be, so Jill and I discussed either February break or April break because of the sports, and the cost is a little bit less to go in February than it is in April, so we would propose February of 2025. And so that would give families enough time, we thought, to save in order to go. And during February, it's, there are crowds, but it's not crowded as it would be typically during a, you know, the warmer months, but the temperature would be temperate because it's Spain, it's, it's not, yeah, you're not going to freeze, it's not, you know, Quebec or something like that. So it wouldn't be like it is here in the wintertime, it'd be, you know, lower 60s or whatever. So let's see, what else? So I said 20 students would be eligible for a private tour. If it's less, we'd be mixed with another school. The fee that they would charge includes everything, it includes all the transportation from place to place, includes the tipping, breakfast and dinner every day, money would be on their own. Let's see. It would be, their recommendation is, so it's, you would need five students and one adult to go, and after that, six students to one chaperone. So if there'd be 11 students, then it'd be two adults that would go.
And how, so are they including?
But.
Are they including one for every six, or is it, so for every six paid students, is there one?
Correct, one adult, one chaperone.
One chaperone. So 20 students will be three or four?
I think it's three, yeah, because that's like 18, yeah, three.
And it's eight, eight nights? Or is it seven?
Yeah, I gave it to you guys, I'm not sure what it's.
Eight days.
Eight days, seven nights. Yeah, we tried to fit it into the week.
Eight days.
Can I bring one for myself? Yeah. Yes.
I think it's great.
Yeah, so, yeah, that would be the week. So Jill and I looked at the calendar and it's the 20th, the 14th to 21st in February.
And who will the trip be open to?
So the trip would be open to stu, obviously students within the community. Everyone has taken Spanish at some point in the district, whether it's Spanish 1, Spanish 2, 3, or 4, you know, we wouldn't want to limit it to only the Spanish 3s and 4s. So I would think anyone that, any student that meets criteria and.
So high school, or is it?
Oh, just high school.
We have a Spanish one in our eighth grade, so.
Just high school.
There'll be freshmen?
Correct, right. I would say, you know, if, if I had my druthers, we would start with the upper, like the juniors, and then sophomores, and then freshmen, just as far as maturity wise goes, and seniors, obviously, too, if they'd want to go. Open it up to the upperclassmen first, sophomores and juniors and seniors, and then freshmen who are now seventh grade? No, sixth grader.
Oh, so you're saying freshman in 25.
Yes.
Eventually work backwards to this building.
Because this, like, these, these girls would not be eligible because they'll be gone.
Yeah.
Although I'm sure they would love to go, but.
Well, she's a junior, so she'll be a senior, junior, it would go juniors to eighth grade.
28, 25, classes 28 to 25. Right.
We'll just write that down.
It's our current eighth graders to juniors.
Right, right. So the academy, yeah, right.
But you'll eventually, you'll introduce it to the eighth grade before the end of this year, so they have time to do the payment plan, I would assume.
Yes, yes. And so, and some of the students that I have in Spanish 4 right now are mostly juniors. There are two seniors, they would not be eligible, but the juniors, even, I guess, I guess my point was, even if they're not taking Spanish next year, I would still offer it to them since they had, had, had taken it for the four years, for sure. So I wouldn't limit it to just, you know, people who are taking Spanish right now, right? Yes.
And is 25 the maximum? I mean, 20 students?
No, that's just the minimum to have it just be our kids together.
Okay.
It can be up to.
We could take 40 kids.
We could take 150 kids.
Yeah, right.
Every six is another adult, so. It's just, this, this particular company likes to have that number of 20, whereas others are 30, others are 35, and I, you know, so I don't know how many we would get, so. Plus, a lot of the professionals that I know that have gone with this company have liked this company better, more, for other reasons, better than other companies.
But do you think the last time BMR went, it was, it was ACIS, very reputable, and their payment plan is amazing? So the last time, which wasn't a long time ago, I think the students went to Quebec City.
With Lisa, right?
Yeah.
Lisa, yeah, de Mars.
And all of a sudden, it was just paid for, so I was like, oh, I don't know any money.
Yeah, so they also offer, so there's a personal fundraising page that they, you know, once the students sign up for it and they register, then they'll get a personal fundraising, fundraising page, kind of like a GoFundMe page, which, not a sad way, but, you know, hey, grandma who lives in, I don't know, another state, I'm, I have this great opportunity, would you help me out, you know, 50 bucks here, 50 bucks there, you know, they could do it that way. We could potentially do a group fundraising, there's always group fundraising options as well. Someone would have to own, own that, and then, you know, car wash or whatever, whoever would want to step up and do that.
Yeah.
It might fall onto me. But if there'd be a parent that would want to, you know, own that and kind of rally the troops to try and do a group fundraising project, that certainly could certainly do that, and then we could divvy it up however we want to do that. And they told me that I could get that to them, however, to put it on the parents who participated or just across the board, or however we want to do it.
Any, any other questions for?
Sounds good.
Great opportunity.
Thank you for putting this energy.
So we would like to send it out, send the note out.
Yes, and we want permission to.
We want, yeah, that's why we're, yeah, can we advertise too?
It is on our agenda as action required, so typically, we approve any overnight field trips, so though it's listed as study abroad, it is a field trip.
We do have a field trip request form here. It just seemed really silly what it is.
Hopefully, I did everything else.
I want to put this in a packet, because it seems silly with the, we're going to Spanish.
A lot of it is pending, so we don't know.
We get to get any money.
But of course, I don't know the number or anything like that, because.
If you could just come back and give us an update, like as things move, I, I think we'd appreciate knowing, you know? Or let us know if there's a fundraiser that we can share out, and, yeah, and how many kids end up signing up. It's just good to know that feedback when.
So that's, yes, we have the permission.
So we'll, we'll need to make a motion.
Oh, that's, oh, okay. I'm getting excited.
Looking for a motion to approve the BMR high school study abroad trip in Spain for February of 2025.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any other questions or requests? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, so yes, that is a blessing, and we look forward to updates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I share one quick thing? Jean, before you leave, what, what Jean didn't share was this conversation actually happened during the Promising Practices Breakfast, which is a very special celebration that we have in the Blackstone Valley annually, and each of the districts in the Blackstone Valley nominates and puts forward one of their best educators, and Jean was our nominee last October, so we get to celebrate Jean and have breakfast, and of course, in true style, Jean was planning a huge trip to Spain. I just had to embarrass you since I had you for a minute.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything you do, Jean.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
All right, next on the agenda is Athletics Advisory Committee, and I think we have Carrie and Tara S. that have an update for us, some information just on what is starting as our Athletics Advisory Committee.
Yeah, Tara and I just wanted to update everyone that we had a great meeting with Mrs. Fowless, Mr. Ducharme, and Mr. Yoder last week at the high school, where we talked all things athletics, and a big part of that was ways in which we can recognize our athletes and bring positive attention to all of the things that the athletics program does. We also talked about, the athletic director is going to start doing a weekly, bi-weekly type newsletter to send out to families. We, whatever things we put on here.
We're going to involve the students, right? So they're going to work the students into the curriculum, like Mr. Jubas' class, am I saying that right? Yep, he's going to start working with some of his students to help promote the athletics. So whether it be like sports marketing class, they're going to start doing hands-on to help with this, yeah.
Bringing back the BMR Athletes Athletic Hall of Fame that is outside of the gym, as well as I know we've had our first BMR Athlete of the Week so far this year, so just all good things to showcase our athletes and all the effort and time that they put in.
And banners. We're looking for sponsors for banners.
Are you looking for people to be on the advisory, like parents or?
If there was anyone who wanted to reach out and be involved in it.
Yep, absolutely.
Do you want to explain the banners a little more?
Okay, so the banners are, it's, Jill, you want to help with this one? Thank you.
No problem.
We have sponsor, we're looking for sponsorship, so the sponsors will have, you will create and have your logo on a three-foot by six-foot final banner. There's an option for one-sided or two-sided. We've already contacted and with NHS Print, who's helped us at a discount. We've already contacted and with NHS Print, who's helped us at a discounted rate for this. And then based on the sponsorship, you've got three, uh, three choices for fall, for spring, or for all three of our seasons. And the, it's great to see that you're supporting the athletics and anything that's happening on the track. We know that the track is used frequently by the community as well. But also for, the, the money is being earmarked specifically for improvements to the field. So the vision for the field is to have stadium seating, not Patriot seating, but stadium seating and, and lighting our field so that we can have, so we can have our home show and we can have any community events and we can have maybe graduation? Like, who knows? You know, there's lots of things. So yes, to, to improve our school, so we're very excited about that.
And rent it out and make more money?
There you go. I love all of that. It will look lovely with the state-of-the-art track and field area with our brand-new school.
I mean, the intention is for it to coincide with that project.
Correct.
And, you know, in good faith, put money towards it. So, so I think it's a great start to doing that.
We can do that.
The efforts.
So if there's any businesses that happen to be watching.
Feel free to email me. Call the high school, we'll get you, we'll get you taken care of. We'll get you on, on there as soon as, as soon as the banners come in, they'll go up that day.
Is the pricing set?
How much are the banners?
Yeah.
The banners themselves, um, uh, through NHS Print is like a hundred dollars to 180.
Sorry, how much is it?
Oh, it's sponsorship. A year sponsorship, I believe, is $1,100 for the whole year. And you'll have that for, um, in the, the spring, in the gymnasium, whether the banner is actually hung in the gymnasium or whether it's on our basketball program, which would be 20 basketball games. That, that's the, uh, that's the pitch.
For the whole year, Dan.
Whole year.
And then, I'm sorry.
And then the renewal, and then when there's a renewal, it's a discounted rate.
And is that, is, we're talking in the gym or are you talking about on the?
On the field. It'll be, it'll be on the track. The first part will be on the track, correct?
So Sam is sending out three options. So if they want, so if they want to cut costs, you can do one season, two seasons, or a full year.
Yeah.
All three seasons.
All three seasons.
And so the banner goes in the, on the track and in the gym?
It starts on the fence of the track.
It starts outside, then goes inside, then goes back out. Yep.
Yep.
It'll be in one location, unless you, unless you'd like more than one, in which case we would be glad to accommodate you in the back parking lot, because we've got a lot of fence in the tennis courts and on the baseball and softball field.
And over 20, um, uh, flowers have gone out to businesses, is that right?
Yep, 20 plus, and just in the, um, just in our area, but if, if anybody is at home and has a business and would like to sponsor, because you have children who are here, and you're not in the Blackstone or Millville zip code, that is fine with us. We're very excited to, uh, support our businesses of our children.
Any other?
Is it possible to put those on the website as well? I'm just thinking as a business, you know, I think they would like to have that seen as much as possible. I don't know if it's legal or not.
Yeah, have to look at our policy to see.
Find the athletics page.
And I was going to say, we have, we have an athletics page, we can put, we can click a link to sponsors.
Yeah.
Yep, and just have that on.
Sponsor of. I was going to say, yeah, strategic pictures.
Right?
Right. Move someone's banner next week.
Oh, wow, our senior picture happens to be next to you.
Everybody move.
And our next senior is here. We'll be glad to do anything to advertise and partner with our, our partners.
All right, thank you for that update. We look forward to more.
Can I just mention one more thing? I'm sorry, in case anybody's listening, the alumni, we're looking for possible future events. Blackstone Millville alumni, just putting it out there. We're looking for anybody interested to contact us.
What do you want them to do?
Um, eventually, maybe like homecoming events like that.
Okay.
We're looking to have them come, maybe give a speech.
We talked about even like the creation of like an alumni database.
Yes.
Where we collect email addresses from past alumni.
Yep.
So then when homecoming is coming, or the band show is coming, or any big district event, like when we do the spring District of One event, and just a quick email out and, you know, come see the great things the school is doing now.
Yeah. I mean, at the very least, we should get our Wall of Fame members in.
Right? Yes.
Show and tell. That's what we'll call it.
You guys are entertaining a wall of shame.
Were you volunteering for that one?
How many years have we gone without doing the Wall of Fame?
Uh, what did Keith say?
I remember the last one, but I don't remember how long.
Since COVID, I think he said, right?
Yeah, he said before.
It's only been a handful. Has it been a lot? It's only been a handful. And I believe the votes already happened from last year, but for whatever reason, something happened, so they have that already.
Because that's usually a winter, yeah, winter.
We actually, we talked about maybe trying to finagle a schedule where like girls varsity would play. Where typically like the girls are home, boys are away or whatever, but we would do girls varsity, then the ceremony, then boys varsity. So we could have a true community event where all the kids could come out and watch it.
And we'll be recognizing more than one year's worth.
No, just one year. The year that was.
We're not going to make up for lost time.
No, just one year.
Baby steps.
All right, thank you so much. And like I said, we look forward to more updates on that. Moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Great, thanks. Good evening, everybody. Just have a few items on my report tonight. The first is to do a, um, a fairly brief walkthrough and overview of our Blueprint 2.0 Year Two Goals and Action Steps. So it'll be important for us to remember this at our October 12th School Committee Meeting, because we're kind of laying some foundation for where we're going to go next with our overall goals as, um, as a district. So tonight, we're going to look a little bit at a reflection that we've done with our leadership team around where we are with our blueprint. And this will really help forecast where we're going with some of our goals, so that when we meet on the October 12th School Committee Meeting and we finish our MCAS presentation and then the formal goals presentation, you'll see some of this show up there too. So it's not in your packet, and that's because it's a living document, and, and all year long, this will actually be changing. And so when we talk about our blueprint and our district strategy, we wanted to provide some deeper framing for individuals so they had a sense of what we actually mean when we, when we say curriculum, instruction, the whole child and community. And so what's laid out here tonight are the specific action steps that are supporting each one of our goals, and then a status update of where we stand. And so I won't read all of these things to everybody. And you'll see this repeatedly as the year moves forward, and the leadership team continues to check in and reflect on our goals. We'll be doing that monthly at our leadership team meetings. I won't make the school committee sit through that monthly, but we will also be having, uh, three times this school year, a very large district-wide instructional leadership team that will be comprised of the principals, assistant principals, coaches, some of the teachers that are on the instructional leadership teams in the building, and some of our students. So we're actually going to sit together as a huge group a few times this year and look at our goals, look at our data, actually look at performance outcomes, and reflect on if we're making progress towards the outcomes that we're expecting. So we want to just put a little bit more framing around it, because we talk about blueprint a lot. And, you know, I often, I think people have a general sense of kind of the four areas, but they're not always sure of like what specific work's happening in each one. And so you can see that underneath each of our strategy and action steps. So I'll read just very briefly the strategy piece. I won't go through each of the actions. But underneath curriculum, the focus areas for us this year to implement fidelity, our new social studies curriculum units and platform. As you remember, um, we were blessed to be able to move forward and purchase a new social studies program this year, K to 12. So it's been really cool. Actually, the past couple of weeks, going into classrooms and seeing this work in action. I always think of social studies as like the forgotten subject, not because it's history. I try. But because, uh, it's, you know, at the elementary level, it can feel, it's one of those things that people squeeze in if they can. And we've been really intentional about not making it that, but actually giving it a dedicated time. And at the secondary level, um, you know, typically, our middle and high school teachers will have old textbooks or, you know, things that they find online, or, you know, units that they've kind of built. And so what, as you know, we did last year was go through a very thorough process and actually landed on research-based curriculum, which is really great. So it's been really awesome to see that in use. Additionally, um, we are going to be looking, sorry, I'm learning how to navigate this screen here. Be with me one second. Okay. We are also looking at our science curriculum and making sure that, um, we have our up-to-date materials and resources. Sorry, I'm just new to the little mouse here. And so we've gone through all of our curriculum, as you know, at this point, all of our core curriculum, which is pretty amazing that that is the case. And so we are now back to revisiting science, looking to see if there are any gaps in our science materials and resources. Additionally, uh, we will be looking at standards-based report cards at the elementary level. We're going to be looking at assessments, and we're going to be looking at writing. So you're going to hear more about that as the goals develop for the October meeting, but I just wanted to forecast that a little bit, because it aligns very well with the curriculum piece of our work. Underneath instruction, um, let me just make sure I can navigate this correctly before I get rolling. Sorry, I'm making myself dizzy here. Good grief. Okay. The first area is to fully align and implement with fidelity the portion of a graduate across all schools. So if you recall, each of our schools have developed essentially an explanation of what our portion of a graduate means at their level, and have laid out a rubric. So you'll notice here, we actually have a lot of, of our status updates is in progress, because that works underway, um, which is really great. And kind of the neat thing about this tracker that we're using is that each of our reporting periods is, you know, one kind of separate column, so you can see over a year the progress that's been made or not made for another, you know, for one reason or another. So it's also an accountability tool for us. The second area is to really ensure that our MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, is in place and implemented at all schools. When you look at our MCAS data, when we have those conversations, once it's released next week, you will see that, that this is a strength of ours. And so we have other areas we very much need to work on, so I certainly don't want to sugarcoat that. But this is an area that is definitely the schools have put strong systems in place for. And so we'll talk more about that in the, in the future weeks. If I can figure out how to move this mouse, let me just make sure. There are two other areas here. I'm trying, I'm scrolling too quickly. The third is to, again, we're staying focused on data. That's a very common theme that we've been really looking at closely over the past few years, and making sure that we have real strong data cycles across all of our schools. And again, you're going to hear a bit about STAR data versus MCAS data and looking at, you know, whether or not that's the best measure to kind of forecast where we're going to land, or is it a better measure of informative information that can help us in our real-time planning? And how should we be thinking about that? So we are definitely very good at using data, in progress in most of these areas. What we want to do is get better and make sure that the tools that we're using are really going to help us get the outcomes we're looking for, which is a whole different challenge, if you will. So we're going to stay focused on that work. And then lastly is this idea of really implementing at a deep level our instructional learning walks. I can tell you just the past couple of weeks, Jill and I have spent separately up to about three hours a day just in classrooms. And it's really been, it's been incredible, spending that much time in our classrooms with our principals, looking at the levels of instruction and learning that have been happening across the district, BK all the way to grade 12. So this will remain very much a focus, but frankly, it's more important that we get our teachers out of their classrooms and into each other's classrooms. And so some schools have started that process, but this year, the goal is to ensure that all of our schools, through their instructional leadership team, are out in each other's classrooms, looking at instruction and giving their colleagues feedback. We've started baby steps with this, so some of our schools have done what they call ghost walks, which I know sounds kind of funny. But they are essentially classroom visits that happen after school. So believe it or not, you can tell a ton from a classroom, without any kids even in it, based on the information that's there, based on how the desks are set up, based on how the classroom is organized. So our teachers have done a really nice job of doing ghost walks. And some places have moved forward and have already done a couple of rounds of instructional learning walks this last, last spring with their colleagues. So we're looking to be doing that across the system. And you know, we have a focus on the whole child, that's the socio-emotional and behavioral health of our kids. And we have started this work around developing a whole-child toolkit. So these are strategies that we can use to help engage the defiant student, the withdrawn or depressed student, the anxious student. We've had a lot of trauma training in those areas through UMass and their Trauma Center. So we are going to be continuously revisiting how do we work to engage those students and kind of keep them focused on their instruction. And then also, you know, how do we support the really stressed-out student that's taking five AP classes? That's doing three varsity sports, that has, you know, marching band, they have more things on their plate than they can possibly manage. We have a lot of that at the high school particularly. So also making sure that we have strategies in the toolkit for our guidance staff and our teaching staff to help support our students who are really high-achieving and, you know, really pushing themselves. A little bit there. Continuing, again, the professional development around that work as well. And then lastly, one of my favorite is our work with our community, because we know how important it is to keep our two towns, our great towns, together around supporting the schools. And so we're looking at different ways of measuring the impact of all of the, and this is one of my, kind of one of my things, and we spent a lot of time talking with this as a leadership team. We communicate a lot. We send out a lot of information. We try to do events. We try to get the community involved. And I always come back to that question to one end, right? We do these things because we want to make an impact, and how do we really measure that? And so we're going to be looking for ways to really continue to promote the school district, but also think about the impact of that work and what is that actually leading to. And I think this is obviously, uh, this is always important, clearly, because this is about the kids and bringing the adults together around the kids. It's incredibly important when we are looking at, you know, school reconfigurations and a school building project. And, I mean, you know, that, this is, that is a community project as far as that work goes. So we'll be looking to do quite a bit of work in that space as well. And then, of course, initiating new community partnerships. You'll see there's a lot of not-started, so we're not entirely sure where to go with that yet. So we've had quite a few conversations about how can we, you know, we've got some incredible partnerships in place, and, which we've talked about over the years, Boys and Girls Club, and partnering with their municipalities, the library, those kinds of things. But, you know, how do we reach out and work strategically and differently with partners that we haven't tapped? So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes tonight to just kind of walk through this as really kind of a foundation for not the only goals that I'll bring to the committee on the 12th of October, but you'll see these themes embedded in, in those. So I just wanted a few minutes to, to walk through those and share a little bit about how we're going to use the tool this year with that.
I think it's interesting to see how it all comes together too, where your goals will have a huge impact on the blueprint, so.
Yeah, for sure. And, and for me, it's, it's kind of triangulating, taking this information, taking all the feedback from the school committee that you've provided through my final evaluation, looking at our data, particularly our MCAS and accountability data that's going to be released soon, and really triangulating all of that, and trying to put together a compilation of goals that are like, just like the right fit for where we are in our district's evolution. So I appreciate you sharing that, Erin. Any last thoughts or questions on that? More to come at our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. I handed out, it was not in your packet, because our enrollment changes daily. So you ran the numbers as of September 11th for our enrollment. I wanted to give an overview of where we stand currently. This could change tomorrow, so I just want to make sure. This could change tomorrow, so I just want to make sure that I kind of put that information out there before reviewing this. But currently, at Millville Elementary, which is obviously housed at the complex, grades PK to 2, we have 360 students. At the JFK AFM Elementary School, grades 3 to 5 specifically, we have 358 students. At the middle school, grades 6 through 8, we have 383. And at the high school currently, we have 392. We have 16 students out of district, and we have 28 students being homeschooled. We do track the homeschool students very, very carefully, just so you're aware. They have to send letters every year with their curriculum, and their number of hours, and their schedule. I review those myself. If I have further questions, I do reach back out to families for additional clarification. We eventually approve those. Our parents are usually very good about making sure that all the requirements are met, and then in the end of the school year, they send a status update. Those vary. Some parents have purchased, you know, online assessments that they use. Some will tell me Joey's doing good with fractions, and I just kind of have to go with it. I have no control over that. But I did want to share that, because I think it's an important piece to see how many families are homes, how many children are homeschooled in the district, and a little bit about the process itself. And then we, every summer, we follow up with our homeschoolers to make sure that every student on that list is accounted for. And so if there's not a new application, we track the kid down to make sure that they're safe.
Some of those students can be in the same family, right? Okay.
Most often are.
Yep.
Quite interesting, you know, we'll have families of five or six children that are all being homeschooled by their parent. God bless them. So, but typically, it's, yeah, in the same family. It would be helpful to see. And then Denise, do you want to give a quick update on our Rave app? We've done quite a bit of work with that.
Yes, we've been working, right now, we're in the process of finishing up putting in our response teams. And a response team is going to be the people that will be able to share and communicate without it being an emergency, so it'll be in district communication. So, it'll be a medical response, or maybe an administrative response. Currently, they're using walkie-talkies, and we're going to be replacing that with the communication tools that are built right into the Rave app. So we've gotten all the staff information, we've imported it, we've also got it all set up with geo-fenced areas, and we're reaching out and setting it up with our EMS next week. So we're really close to getting this. It'll be pushed out to all the staff to start using it after next week, when we set it up with the EMS, for the two different towns. It's been a lot of moving pieces. When we had first started it, we didn't realize all the pieces that we would need, so in order to get all of the staff, their cell phone numbers, we had to reach out and request them. So, that was a matter of getting all of that data back. And now, working with each one of the buildings to determine who their response teams and who their administrative teams, who they want notified for each event. And then we also have unique messages that we can send out in it, we can create our own response message. So we're putting that also as an option for what they can pick for their messages that they would like to have, as an option for them to communicate with.
Are you getting a lot of support from the staff?
We have not got any pushback. It has been well-received. It is a communication tool, it is nothing more than that, it's a way for us to, it's part of our safety planning. And everyone is very concerned about safety, so it has not been any problem, everyone has seemed very much supporting.
Thanks, Denise. That concludes my report.
All right. Moving on to the business office.
So in your packets, you have the email for the cellphone grant. I'm going to give you a little bit more background, we have to accept this today. This is a cellphone grant at the middle school level. It is going to be supporting almost $10,000 worth of supplies, which would be pouches and some materials that'll allow us to store their cellphone devices, because we're going to a zero-usage school on the, at the middle school level. And it's also going to support some PD of staff training, and then some additional stipends for some communication that's going to be happening throughout the school year. So this is, like I said, at a middle school level, and it's a grant that's developed and designed to help students learn to use their cellphones healthy and communicating for well-being. So, we're working hard. It's not something we're doing at a high school level, because at that level, you know, we've kind of missed it, as far as for, so we're looking to try and reach that middle school level, and teaching them better communication tools and effectively utilizing their cellphones in a way that's safe.
So I know when Mary was here last meeting, she briefly touched on being like the cellphone freak, so.
This is going to support her in her endeavors. They're going to be utilizing them out, not at all within the school, and, but it's not just that, the teachers are being trained and educated on how to communicate with the students, to get them through this anxiety and stress of not being able to use it all the time. So there's going to be, that's what the PD is, it's going to be training them to work with the students.
Are they going to have any PD on how to work with the parents that are not happy about this?
I'm sure that will have to be coming, this is an opportunity to be continued grant, so, on our next, as we've gone through and determined the obstacles, I'm sure they will be rewriting their next submission to accommodate those obstacles.
Okay.
So the grant is for $14,674.
So we need a motion to accept the cellphone grant.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the cellphone grant for $14,674.
Second.
Do we have to say, we want to say the fun. All right, so motion made by Dan, and second by Tara. Any discussion or questions for? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you to everyone that participates in acquiring these grants.
Our next item on the air is the evidence-based early literacy grant. This was, this is at the MES level, Middleville Elementary, and it's going to be for the K to 2 grade level of early literacy, getting some more of that support to expand. I'm so sorry.
Sorry, Dan Brooks.
No worries. So it's going to be from research-based practices that they're going to be working with the students to expand literacy.
This is the second year.
Yes, I'm so sorry, this is a continuation, this is a second year of this grant.
Was it the same amount last year, or is this more?
This is a little bit more, slightly more.
Slightly more.
The focus this year is on reading. Last year, it was focused on reading. So collectively, it's been, it's over $100,000.
Perfect. Again, a big thank you to everyone, I know Mrs. Schaefer's worked hard on that one.
She sure has.
All right, so looking for a motion to accept the evidence-based early literacy grant in the amount of $56,825.
Motion.
Motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara S. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, thank you.
Next item is the personnel update. You have the list of the newly hired staff. Anybody have any questions about the newly hired staff?
Happy to see that it's smaller everything.
As I am.
Yes.
Next item on the list is our expenditure report. Want to take an opportunity to look at this? One of the things I wanted to point out is the large number that is on instructional classrooms. We have 8.4 as our budgeted line item. Of those salaries that were budgeted on that line, 420,000 of them are being paid from grants. So as you arrow over all the way to the right-hand side where it says the budget balance, that is a large budget balance, but it is over 40.
So Denise, 430,000 of that, 835 is grants.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay.
Four of the 835 is grants, and then of the other ones, those are current existing vacant positions that are coming up with that amount.
And we have four Unit A positions left to fill, we have a V-CBA, we have the elementary music at K, pre-K to 2, also does some chorus at the middle school, and we have the STEM position at the high school, and we have the math intervention position at the high school. We've moved a tutor, a staff member into a tutor position to tutor at math at the high school, so we can provide some service while we continue to search. But those are the, those are the only vacancies we have left.
We have those posted, and we're actively searching.
For, yeah, for Unit A.
And as you continue down, do you want to have any questions about any specific line items?
The capital projects line, Denise?
Oh, yes.
Do you want to touch on the?
Our capital projects lines, and you'll see, it's the fourth line from the bottom, capital projects, 5450 is the object code. That is where you will see the costs that have took a process for the MES move, so we wanted to put them in a separate area, where they'd be very clear and to be able to stand out. And I know we have some surplus revenue coming in that will help compensate for some of those expenditures. These are not the completed expenditures, we still have some more coming. This does not include the big moving company invoice.
So there's another 35,000 to 37,000 going on that?
Yes, yes, sir.
So about 60 grand, 60, 65,000?
Yes, sir. We had different expenditures, and we've been speaking about it as we've gone along, of the different things that we had encountered, whether it was some rugs, or making a play area, or fixing a playground.
Can I ask?
So Dan, just so you know, right before you got here, we approved, the state budget numbers were, came in higher than.
Yeah, okay, I did read that.
So our revenue was higher, but our expenditures to pay our school choice and charters was also increased, but we're still at about a $92,000 surplus. So I did state during that time that unfortunately, it's, instead of being a surplus, it's going to end up covering the majority of.
Right.
Which will benefit us from not having to go into E and D.
Right.
Right, and so, but that number seems high, but there was some things that were probably taken care of by the district that, like, was it some rugs and things that done that were due to be, in some of those classrooms, rightly placed.
Sure.
As far as covering those floors and things like that.
Yep.
Okay. So it's not all related to the?
No.
Yes and no, but it's, it had to be, some of that stuff needed.
The move pushed it.
The move pushed it.
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, like, the security posts in front of each building?
Oh, but no, those are part of the safety grant that we had.
So that's not others?
No, those are not. The access panel at the new door is part of that.
And we do have, if the committee is interested at any point, we do have a full accounting, that's why we put everything on one line.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't have to search through and try to find, you know, kind of hunt and peck for all the expenditures, they'll all be on one line. So if you want to see them, they're all going to be charged to the capital projects line, so we can run a report for just that fund code, the 5450, and you all can see what was there.
I can have it at the next meeting, but we are still missing a few costs.
And just to make the point, it's, so I'm not, just so people at home don't think, so, it's not, it's relative to the move, but these are things that were, some of these things needed to be done in these classrooms, that kind of pushed it.
The rugs came to about 90,000, a little less than that.
Also, Dan, to your point.
Yes.
Things like the playground, right?
Right.
Like going and leveling out some of the p-stone, removing the cement pieces at the end of the slide, removing some of the playground equipment that was, you know, unsafe. Some of those things, you know, at the end of the day, we talked about those prior, this kind of pushed that issue. You know, when we moved the kids back to Millville, we're not going to make the playground unsafe again.
Right, right, right.
Like, obviously, so it's going to, it's going to go, it's going to kind of pay forward to the families that use that playground anyways, kind of to what you were saying about.
Yeah, this is kind of, some of that stuff we talked about last year, before the school year started.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions on the expenditure? It's kind of our first glance at this year's, like, the first full run of it. So we'll get this monthly.
Yes.
You'll see how the numbers move in and out of encumbrance and budget balance, et cetera, so.
I miss engaging with Tammy on those.
All right, thank you for that. Anything else, Denise?
No.
Okay. Next up is our facilities report. We appreciate you always being here for a live report.
No problem. Seems a little early, should I come back?
No. Listen, I have a lot more about the blueprint we can talk about.
No, 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 no. Facilities. Well, let me speak first, please.
I'm going to read all those actions.
Motion to approve all requests.
All right, so I installed a railing at the track entrance, the handicap entrance at the BMR track. It's kind of a, to prevent anybody from falling off the edge of the track as they're exiting through the gate. I do have to make some improvements to it, as I feel students may try to sit on top of it, so I'm going to add a couple more supports, just to make sure it's safer. The small leak in the pipe, that's still not addressed yet. Again, that has to be done on a Saturday, we're going to get that scheduled. We discovered that the ventilation system in the boiler room is not running, and I think this is causing the gym and the corridor to lead to the gym to be extremely warm. I did have the electrician come out, and he found a faulty relay that has to be ordered. It may prove difficult to get because of the age of the unit, but he is working on that. We will get it running one way or another. Moving on to the middle school, there was a lodge beesnest built into a light fixture outside by the oil tank, it's pretty huge. We did send out notification that this would be sprayed today, November 14th, and that was done. While he was out here, I also had him address a beesnest that's out in the woods, built into a tree, that a couple of our cross-country athletes got stung from. So that's been sprayed as well.
Thank you.
The chemical they used could take up to a couple of days, he said, to kill the nest. So, and while he was out, I also had him do a lodge beesnest on the back of the scoreboard, scoreboard at the BMR track, that was discovered this week as well. And I also found a beesnest built into the corner of the BMR High School outside by the garage, the old auto shop. And that was addressed today as well. Also at BMR, yesterday, we discovered the main sewer line leading from the lobby bathrooms down to the cafeteria staff locker rooms was clogged. The lobbies were still able to be used due to the length of the pipe, it wasn't actually backing up there, it was backing up into the kitchen locker rooms. But that was addressed today, it was all cleared out, so that's taken care of. It was a minor issue, it wasn't as bad as it sounds.
It sounds awful.
Trust me, it wasn't. It happened once before, and I was able to clear it myself, but it was closer to the locker rooms than it was up here. It was discovered that it was baby wipes that were found in the sewer line.
Yeah.
That's been addressed as well. Let's see, what else we got? The sink at the JFK girls bathroom, right outside of the cafeteria, that's been leaking for quite a while. We have a bucket under it currently to prevent the water from dripping on the floor. A plumber is coming in on Saturday, because the water has to be shut off to the building there as well, to complete this work. None less shut off valves to the sink work, so you got to shut down the water to the whole entire building. And that will be done on Saturday. And during Monday night's power outage at JFK as well, it was discovered that the walk-ins in the freezers in the kitchen are not on generated backup, as well as the fire panel for some reason. It set off an alarm to the fire department, they had to come to respond. So, I have Craig Cassidy and our electrician looking into that as well. And at the Millville Elementary School, we have a compressor in the boiler room, has two motors on it, one of the motors went into an overload fault, that was caused by a power outage last month. Our electrician was able to reset the fault on that, and that is back up and running. And that compressor just controls the pneumatic valves and thermostats in the classrooms. The second motor is a backup motor, obviously. The second motor is a backup motor, obviously, so it was never an issue. And that is what I have. Questions, concerns?
Can I ask, that, at the Kennedy School, Maloney School, that the generator doesn't operate the freezers and the fire panel?
Well, it previously did, but we just had that freezer replaced, so when they wired it up, they must not have put it on there.
Correct.
But that was replaced over the summer.
As well as, I would imagine, the fire panel was on backup.
The fire panel was on backup, and it has a battery backup as well.
Okay.
So just.
It's just a matter of how long the batteries will last.
I feel like the battery backup is the way the fire panels work. It's probably not usually the generator.
Not generator, yeah.
Maybe our battery backup is some reason.
Yeah.
Yeah, either way, the electrician will look into it. Another one here is on generator backup. Yeah. But newer building.
I was just going to say, the older buildings, I think it's.
Yeah, so it's weird.
But it might be worth doing, looking into.
It's weird too, because the JFK side, they had those emergency lights on the wall, so it was very dark when I went in there. But the AF Maloney side has a couple of light fixtures that are built into it, so, because it's newer.
Does the fire, shouldn't, no. Shouldn't the fire department be inspecting these at the beginning of every school year, like those emergency panels?
We also have a company that comes in and tests as well.
All right.
Unless you have a power outage and the transfer switch switches over, you really don't know this.
He will be.
All right. Any other questions? Perfect.
Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, we have facility requests. I have two. Do you have any?
Yes, we had one that just came in, and the reason we put it, are going to bring it forward tonight is because the first is on, event is on October 5th, so it wouldn't be before, before our next meeting.
But is this the one?
No, it's the second.
Okay.
Yeah, the Girl Scout one, this is a different Girl Scout group. That one, you did the last time. And then we have the Blackstone volleyball basketball league.
The only question I had about the basketball is, did we usually have Friday night practices? Do we have custodian Friday nights?
Yes.
Because I felt like it was Monday through Thursday.
We did. We used it on Fridays.
And the custodians.
It just looked funny to me.
The school. No.
The town?
BMY.
Okay. Well, so this request, this request, the first request, it says request number one, is for AFM and Millville Gym, Monday through Friday, October to March, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and it's just going to be their practices, town and travel, I'm sure. The other one is a request for just their tryout weeks, which is before our basketball season, October 23rd through November 9th. So I assume we'll get another request for the Saturday game days, and, because that's not even included on this Millville one for Saturday mornings.
Jen is waiting to see.
After they get teams.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, and then the one Jason has is for JFK, for a Girl Scout troop, with every date listed specifically, but it's essentially, looks like it's twice a month, October through June, which is a typical Girl Scout meeting time. And, and we already know that these go through our secretaries with this calendar, so coming to us, we know that the dates are clear. I'm looking for a motion to approve the three facility requests as delivered. Motion made by Tara L., is there a second? Second. Second by Ted. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. And moving on to committee forum.
Did you mention anything about any dates?
No, if you want to do that, I would appreciate it. Actually, we did briefly when we made our motion for the feasibility study warrant articles, but if you want to give us a little more update.
It'll be on the Board of Selectmen's agenda for Tuesday, this coming Tuesday.
So the Blackstone date will be confirmed after Tuesday.
Tuesday night, yeah.
And we noted Monday, uh, Millville's is set for November 1st, when we did our, but I think we'll consistently remind everyone at our committee forum of our upcoming town meeting dates. Anything else to add?
Uh, no, not at this time.
If we had an alumni database, it would be a good way to inform people of town meeting dates when important votes are about to happen.
So is the advisory committee working?
It's on, it's one of our action steps.
That'd be a great job.
Is it an alumni database like Facebook?
Oh, no. I mean, there's that.
Any other committee forum?
Just the school building project, I should have said this earlier. We do have a webpage now on the district website, so people who need, want more information about the project, and follow all of our minutes and agendas and all the details of the feasibility study and whatnot, will be there.
Lots of information.
Yeah, that looks great. Thank you guys for getting that linked up.
Anything? Nope. All right, our next meeting is October 12th.
You're on my committee.
Here.
You're on my committee.
And we are looking to move our November 9th meeting to November 2nd. However, we can be flexible with that day. If Blackstone needs November 2nd as a town meeting date, we could always meet Monday the 6th, so we should wait till our October 12th meeting to move our November meeting.
Yes.
Okay. If everyone could just keep November 2nd open, or open it up if it's not open, I saw you. But November 9th needs to be adjusted.
Good, I think we're at that one. I was going to miss it.
Oh, you were going to miss it? We don't want you to miss it, that's why we're going to move it.
That was awful to me.
All right, and.
Are we moving November 9th because of the Veterans Day?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the reason.
Yes, okay. I don't know if November 2nd would be.
There is no school November 10th. Am I right?
Right. They're absorbing it on the Friday.
No school on November 3rd and then November 10th.
Correct. A professional development day and then the Veterans Day.
Yeah, they only go to school on the 17th for a Friday in November. One Friday.
One Friday.
Exactly. Thanksgiving holiday.
Yep.
I know someone on my street that will be so happy to hear that. All right, so, looking for a motion to move into executive session, and it's a roll call, so.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Motion made by Ted?
Motion made by Ted, yes.
And is there a second?
A second.
Second by Dan, and roll call. Ted?
Yes.
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 Aaron, yes. Tara?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
We have, Ted, I need you to sign, please.